And we are going to start. Good evening and welcome to City Council. We welcome everybody back to our first live meeting in a while. If you will please stand for invocation and our pledge.
Tonight, in our invocation, our prayer, I'm going to remind us of some words spoken by Christ and by Peter as we look at our situation tonight in our city and in our country and our state. So pray with me. Our dear gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you tonight. We just thank you for this time that we can come and do the business of this great city. Thank for those folks who have joined us either in present, in their body, or by Zoom, and just ask that you would watch over each and every one of us and keep us healthy and safe tonight as we meet. What I'm... think, your words come to mind of Christ that he spoke in Mark. And tonight I just want to read those to remind us all of the commandment that you gave, a new commandment that you gave us. And you said, "Thou shalt love the Lord thy God with all your heart, with all your soul, with all your mind, and with strength." And the second is likened to it, "Thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself." And there is none other commandment greater than these. And you reminded us in John that a new commandment I give unto you, that you love one another, is I have loved you, that you also love one another. By this all men know that you are my disciples if you love one another. And Peter reminded us, and above all things, have fervent love among yourselves, for love shall cover the multitude of sins. And so I remind us tonight that as we look at the landscape of where we are at, that we would be reminded of the love that we have experienced in Christ in our lives, and that we would show that forward to our fellow man, no matter who they are. And we think of, as we look at this weekend, as we think about Father's Day, we do give thanks tonight and praise for our fathers and the impact that they have had in our lives, and that we would be a great reflection of them and the positive impact that they have had. So we thank you tonight for our fathers, those who are fathers and those who will be fathers. Thank you for this time, and may what was done, may what is done here be pleasing in your sight, and that your name be glorified, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please draw your pledge. I pledge to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Olmert, the roll, please.
That sounded a lot better than a dozen, too.
That thing is terrible.
I'm here.
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 The gang is all here. Before we approve our council meeting minutes, I do want to take just a moment, I'm going to steal some words from Cartersville Board Chair Kelly Dial. This week, our community has lost a giant Linda Benton, left behind a legacy of love, civic pride, and public service. She was a school board mentor to Kelly, as she mentioned, became a cherished friend shortly thereafter, as she was to many of us. She adored her biological family, but also counted every student in the Cartersville City Schools as hers as well. She put her all into making sure they received the best education, including worrying about their soft skills that are often neglected, and whether their environment facilitated success. And we just want to wish our best to the Benton family. Linda was certainly a friend and somebody that impacted so many lives in a positive way, and carries invocation so eloquently put about love, and may we all be remembered for the way that we treated each other. So if you would join me in a brief moment of silence for Ms. Benton. Thank you. Council, you have before you the meeting minutes from our June 4 meeting, and had an opportunity to look these over well in advance, and so now be an opportunity to make any corrections to that, or if there are none, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved unanimously. I do want to mention our meeting tonight, obviously, back in council chambers with all the appropriate precautions, and also on Zoom. We will have a series, we'll have a few different public hearings tonight. If you are listening on Zoom and want to participate, what I'm going to need you to do is click into the chat room on the bottom middle of your screen, and you'll need to give your name and your address for David Hardegory, who is doing the moderating tonight, and then, or somebody is.
Send it to Tamra.
Oh, yeah, send it to Tamra on that screen. And then, when the time has come for public comment, if you're on Zoom and you wish to speak, they will unmute you. You will be audible to everybody here in the room and up on the screen for those that are here looking, and you'll be able to make your comments then. Anybody who's here that wishes to comment during those public hearings, obviously, step to the podium, give your name and address for our clerk, and we'll move on from there. So, thank you. First item tonight is actually a resolution, and it's one that there's been a lot of time and care put into this. We typically don't read them, but we're going to. And this resolution is going to be signed not just by the mayor, but by members of City Council as well. It says, "A resolution of the mayor and the City Council of the City of Cartersville and State of Georgia condemning racism and discrimination. Whereas the mayor and the City Council of the City of Cartersville and the City of Cartersville Police Department are deeply saddened and concerned by the tragic events that have recently occurred across the country and here in Georgia. Whereas the mayor and the City Council of Cartersville and the City of Cartersville Police Department are expressly opposed to racism, bigotry, hate, and violence in any form. Whereas the mayor, City Council, City of Cartersville, and the City of Cartersville Police Department are committed to actively working against the damaging effects of racism and to ensuring the constitutional rights of every person who lives, works, and visits Cartersville, Georgia. Whereas people of all race, color, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender, mental disability, or physical disability contribute to Cartersville's strength and well-being. Whereas the mayor and City Council of the City of Cartersville and the City of Cartersville Police Department will continue to be honest and transparent with internal and external stakeholders as we continue to build on the culture of trust within the community. Whereas the mayor and the City Council of the City of Cartersville and the City of Cartersville Police Department believe that equal justice should and can be provided to all, that equal justice and the safety and security which is facilitated by having a police department are not mutual exclusive and should be available to all members of the public. Furthermore, they can and should be provided without racism, bigotry, hate, and violence to all. And whereas the City of Cartersville Police Department has long been a diverse department that has a reputation of employing men and women of the highest ethical standards, that understand and are taught the importance of equal treatment to every citizen and business owner. Whereas the City of Cartersville Police Department has stayed accredited, and our officers annual receive more training that exceeds what is the requirement of the State of Georgia. And whereas the men and women of the City of Cartersville Police Department appreciate the overwhelming support from our community and hereby promise to protect, serve, and exceed the expectation of honesty, transparency, and fair treatment to all citizens. Whereas in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens and visitors, the mayor and City Council of the City of Cartersville and the City of Cartersville Police Department wish to condemn racism, bigotry, hate, and violence which cannot be tolerated in Georgia, and in particular in Cartersville, Georgia. Now therefore being resolved by the mayor and the City Council of the City of Cartersville and the State of Georgia, that all representatives of the City of Cartersville government will stand, we stand with all citizens of the City of Cartersville and the City of Cartersville Police Department against racism in all forms, and affirm our commitment as a city and as a police department to providing an environment that supports civil rights to all. And I will be happy to sign, oh, actually, I can't do that yet. But that is the resolution before you, council. Any discussion, and if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And I will be happy to sign this ordinance right now, and I will ask, kind of rehearse this about five different ways, but you know what? In the interest of time, I'm going to pass this. And every council member that chooses to. Thank you. I want to thank Ms. Brock for her leadership and direction in starting and crafting that, even while she was away from work last week, and to Mr. Lovell, who put an awful lot of time in crafting a very well-done document, and for the input from council on making sure we were including as many things as we can there. So, thank you. Our next item is an appointment to the Cartersville Library Board. Ms. Brock.
Yes. Mayor Barner is turning on Cartersville Board to complete the Library Board vote for the term on June 30th of 2020. Do you like to continue serving in reappointed term and expire June 30th of 2023? Is your approval of this reappointment required?
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Appointment to the Alcohol Control Board, Mr. Manino.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Jennifer Smith has been recommended to serve the Ward One appointment to the Alcohol Control Board. That is a four-year term, which will expire June 3rd, June 3, 2024.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Randy on this item? And if not, a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have a first of a few public hearings tonight, and again, if you're on Zoom and would like to be included in any comments, you'll hit the chat button and put your name and address, and we'll recognize you at the appropriate time. Mr. Manino, if you'll get us started on this. This is a first reading of AZ 20-01.
Thank you again, Mayor. This is one of three cases we have on the agenda tonight. All of the applications have been properly posted and advertised. Additionally, this Zoom video meeting conference link was also legally advertised and posted on the sites. With that, this application is for de-annexation of 1.67 acres that is adjacent to and south of the Clarence Brown Center. This tract was part of an original 20-something acre tract that was annexed into the city in 2010 after the Clarence Brown Center was developed. Adjacent property that was owned by the Board of Regents has been sold, and it was rezoned by the county to be developed in a planned development. With that, they are looking to purchase this one-acre tract that the county owns and add it to the property that's being developed that is, again, in the county jurisdiction. The individual departments that review these for the city have reviewed it. The only comments were relating to the detention pond of the property. This property encompasses a portion of that detention pond. As part of the development process, that will, the engineering of that will have to be reviewed with the city and county. And with that, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this de-annexation.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing relative to case AZ 20-1. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and Council. My name is Carl Lugens, 114 Old Mill Road. I'm here representing Barto County on this de-annexation. I appreciate your time tonight. With everything going on, it's nice to finally see everybody's faces again. I'm not so much a crazy about the Zoom thing, so I'm glad we're all here, or the people that can make it. This de-annexation is being sought by the county. It's a benefit to the county and to the property of the conference center, as well as a benefit, mutual benefit to the developer that is planning on developing the PUD property next door. What this does, it actually allows the county to, conference center property to be more square, more geometrically favorable for future development or parking. And it does the same for the developer next door. This is a really good deal for the county because they're technically getting rid of a detention pond, and Walmart will be the, actually, all this property, Walmart, the property next door, conference center, was all owned by the Board of Regents. The detention pond behind Walmart was titled to allow any Board of Regents property to drain into it and to expand it. So, and then Walmart has to pick up the maintenance on it. So, this pond will be shifted into theirs. It will help everybody, it will reduce the cost for the county, for the conference center, and it will provide benefit to the geometry of the property. If you have any other questions, we just ask for your consideration in this, the annexation.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lugens at this time? Thank you, sir. Again, public hearing for 20- AZ 20-01. Anybody else wishing to step forward, speak for or against? They do so at this time. And at this time, Mr. Hardegory, anybody online on the Zoom call?
The ones that...
Okay, thank you. With that being said, I'll close the public hearing for AZ 20-01, and council will take this up for final consideration with another public hearing at our meeting on July the Mr. Manino, if you'll get us started with AZ 20-02.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is another de-annexation. We've never had two on one agenda. This 55-acre tract was formerly part of Carter Grove Development. This was a far-reaching piece that extended all the way down to Bates Road. Mr. Meeks, who bought the property, owns the adjacent property, I'd like to include this with his tract that is in the county jurisdiction. When this was rezoned, there was some restrictions placed on the Carter Grove development regarding Bates Road because they didn't want, the county had requested no access coming off of Bates Road for going into the subdivision development. This de-annexation would turn it back over to the county because right now they actually control access anyway because they own both sides and at least one side of the entire road for the entire length of it. So they were made aware of this request and had no objection to that. With that, again, it will remove the conditions that were placed on it as part of the Carter Grove, it will remove it from Carter Grove, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this de-annexation. The applicant was with us via Zoom during the Planning Commission meeting. I did not see him here, and I'm not sure if he's on the call right now during this first reading.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing for AZ 20-02 and ask anybody who wishes to step forward and speak for or against to do so at this time. And I'm seeing none, and I'll give anybody online the opportunity for a few more seconds if they wish to generate the chat room with their name and address. You good? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for AZ 20-02. And again, council will take this up for another public hearing and final consideration at our July 2 meeting. Randy, continue on with Z 20-01.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a rezoning request from GC to MF14 for a property located at the end of Main An overlooked parkway. It's adjacent to the new True Hotel that's currently under construction. It's a 27.71-acre tract. They're looking to put on approximately 210 units for an apartment complex. It equates out to about 7.6 units per acre. When you relate that to like Avonlea, which is 13.7 units, it's almost half the density of Avonlea with the additional property out here. And now, again, a lot of that's very difficult to develop with the slope going up behind that. We did receive a letter of support from the owner of the Hilton True Hotel adjacent to it, additionally, from the Jordans who own property north and, I believe, west of this particular property. We did receive support from them also. With that, the individual departments that review this for the city have reviewed it, and with that, there were no major concerns, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application. Additionally, there was a condition placed on it by the Planning Commission that applicant did present a plan that only included one and two-bedroom apartment units, and with that, with that being on the application, they asked the applicant if he is willing to make that a condition, and he was, and that is part of the Planning Commission's recommendation, that condition.
In the work session, you, we discussed water capacity and sewer capacity and things like that. Do you mind commenting on that, or would you prefer for Mr. Jones to do that?
Mr. Jones had noted they would definitely look at the capacity when it got to the development process and further on. I had noted that when those lines were installed, it was anticipated that development would be up and down that corridor. Once upon a time, that roadway, that roadway was supposed to stretch all the way up to Center Road, and the infrastructure was installed in the late 90s. A lot of that infrastructure's been sitting there with no development on it. The True Hotel is the first thing being developed on that side of 75 since the 90s. So...
Okay. Thank you.
Bob could add additional comments if you would like him to.
I think Bob feels you did just fine, judging by his nodding. But thank you. Any other questions for Randy at this time?
Oh, Mayor, I have one I meant to ask during the work session, and I forgot. Is there any connectivity between the hotel and this proposed property and the walking trail up there?
We'd have to ask the developer. I am not aware of it.
Okay, I was just curious.
And the applicant is here to represent the application.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Randy?
I saw that we had one Planning Commission that didn't vote in favor. Did they voice their opinion, or did they just...
They did not give a specific reason. They just voted no. They have traditionally voted no for all apartments, and in previous meetings have said because of potential impacts on the school system.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else for Randy at this time? Thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing for Z 20-01. Ask anybody wishing to do so to step forward, speak for or against at this time. And again, your name and your address for our clerk, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Brett Oliver. I am, my address is 853 Lake Avenue, Atlanta, Georgia. I am a partner and director of development for CF Real Estate Services. We are a apartment manager, owner, and developer in Atlanta. Very excited about the opportunity to come to Cartersville and become part of the community here, and to bring high-quality new housing to Cartersville. You know, we, our plan for this new community is to attract young professionals to the area that either live here or want to call Cartersville home, but don't necessarily have a brand-new apartment community that they could call home. And so we think that there is an audience there and a demand because Cartersville is such a wonderful place to live, but yet the apartments have yet to come. So I think you all have seen our preliminary site plan here, and while I realize the zoning's not necessarily site plan-specific, I think I want to talk to you about some of the key components of our vision for it. First is that we wanted to create a strong street presence along Overlook Parkway, so we have purposefully put all of our buildings up along Overlook Parkway in order to create like a more of a Main Street feel. And that we also feel like this will be more of a complement to the True Hotel. We will, there will be sort of a shared driveway that you will enter to get to the True Hotel. And I think to answer the question as far as the access to the hiking trail, we won't have that direct access, but I believe that they will, so...
What would be the approximation to trails and apartments?
Well, I believe, I guess we're still, we're further, I guess we're further north, yes, we're further north of the trail. So I don't think we'll have the opportunity necessarily to create a direct access point. Secondly, and as was mentioned earlier, we have made a commitment where we're only programming one and two-bedroom units. We will also, the project will feature a clubhouse that will house our leasing office, a community clubroom, fitness center, and a community pool. I think it's also been noted that we have reached out to all of our neighbors, and we've gotten their support. I think that they all recognize that we will help further establish this portion of, on the other side of the highway, and as a commercial district. So ultimately, we believe that this is in character with the community, that it will be in the spirit of the Main Street overlay, and that it'll be an asset to the community. So appreciate your time today and your consideration, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Oliver?
Do you, one question, do you have any plans to expand the present, with the seven buildings? Do you have any plan to expand that to more?
At the moment, we do not, no. Ms...
And why would want the two, you, why would want two-bedroom units? Is that something in the planning?
Yeah, we, yeah, we had, we had direct communication, too, with the school superintendent. He indicated that, you know, there was, they would prefer the one and twos, and so we are more than happy with doing that. We think that there's a strong audience for ones and twos, and so...
What's the targeted rental range for those?
Sure. The, we're, we're starting rents are going to be around $1,175. And so for context, for the way we manage our properties, that equates to about a $45,000 a year salary for a qualified tenant. And then they will range up to $1,500 or so for a two-bedroom.
I just want to make sure, because you're building the man managing? These are, do you keep those in your portfolio?
We, we are, we do, we own, we manage, we will manage this, whether we own this for an extended period of time, we could, or we could sell, but we're going to build this to institutional quality to where, so the people that we do sell to, in the event that we did decide to sell it, would, you know, would be of institutional quality.
Okay.
That would manage this asset to a high level.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Oliver at this time?
I just need to get my bearings. Where is this hotel?
So...
You wrote that picture right there. They got a tie in that driveway that will truck high to your own hills property.
Yeah. There it is. I'll come over there. So as you're coming in, you take a left, come over the road, and then you can take it right here, and that grade starts to change, but that means you start going up the hill backwards, and that's True Hotel's sort of same promenade up here.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have one question. Do you have, can you give me a name or example of some apartments that are already constructed and are managing in Atlanta or areas?
Sure. One of our, one of our, I guess more, we built the, it's called Olmstead Chambly, which is in, right, you might have seen it, it's got the big, the Chambly sign at the corner of Chambly Tucker and Peachtree Industrial. That was one that we designed, built, and managed.
And so that's similar to this?
It's, this will be different. This will be, this is, this will be a garden-style community, so where that was a little bit more of an infill, a little bit higher density of a project, but we, but this is more fitting with sort of the price points that we're trying to achieve. But, you know, we have a reputation, that project actually won ULI Atlanta's award for excellence in housing, which we were honored by, but we have a reputation for building high-quality product and absolutely intend to do the same here.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Continue the public hearing for this zoning application. Anybody else wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And Mr. Hardegory, if you'll just let, give me a thumbs up if there is somebody on there, and if not, I'll just assume no.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name's Jeff Royall. I represent the property owners. I live at 877 South Main Street in Madison, Georgia. I'm here speaking in favor of this application. of this application. I do so because I've been working with CF Real Estate for just about three years now. They've been looking at the property on and off. So, they're very familiar with the site and the market and the unique challenges of this location. I think members of staff could attest to the fact we've been working closely for a long time to try to get this project rolling. And, these guys are the right company for the job. They build a quality product. We've done our due diligence on them. They've got the right dial-up of bedrooms that won't be an impact on the school system, which was a concern. And, they've got the right number of units. 210, I believe, is a, is a, the right density for this site, not trying to max out the capacity of the space. And, and yes, so, we're confident they can get the job done, and this is the right time to, to move forward with this project. Just to address the question about the trail connectivity, the, this location is about a mile from the Pine Tree Trail system, but the True Hotel is planning to connect access from their back parking lot. There's an existing trail back there, and I've had conversations with the owner where they did plan to do some connectivity there. I believe they are willing to work with the developer of this project, but it hasn't been discussed in detail yet, but it's certainly something that could be possible. Because I know that as part of their value proposition was going to be connectivity to walking trails. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
This may be better. I don't know if this is a question for Mr. Oliver. I felt they ask it. But, kind of what's your timeframe, looking at, say, it does get approved, do you rezone? Do you have like a timeframe? Because we have, you know, there's, sometimes we rezone something, but then it sits on, sits-
Right.
-for three or four years, and there's no action we take in. Do you have like a timeline?
Yeah. I believe initially, we're looking at around 120 to 180 days from this point. They've, the property has been under contract for some time now. I can't be sure exactly what their timeline is for construction, but in terms of, you know, closing on the property, you know, potentially before the end of the year. And, and at that point, they'd be moving forward with the project. They've already done a significant amount of layout, as you can see in, in background on it. So, we're confident that, you know, they're serious about the project and ready to move forward when they can.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Royall.
Thank you.
All right. We'll continue on with public hearing for AZ 20-02. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, and seeing that there are none wishing to do so on our Zoom call, I'll close the public hearing for AZ 20-02. And council will have another public hearing and take it up for final consideration on July the 2nd. Our next item is, Mr. Porter, you've got the next handful or so.
Yes, Mayor. The first one is Airport Authority Board. Hans Lujan is the city appointee for that position, and he is willing to serve another term for that if the council so wishes.
Okay. I'll simply comment that Hans, all of our appointees give of their time and talents, and I would put Hans up there with, with anybody with the amount of time and effort he puts into looking after the airport. And, I'm glad that he's wanting to continue to, because it'd leave a tremendous hole if he decided that he didn't want to. So, if there's no discussion, a motion would be in order.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Dan.
Yes, sir. It's a G.DOT grant for the airport. This is one of those things that we've been working on with the state and the federal government on additional funding for the airport, for the runway repaving job, as well as engineer material restor system at each end of the runway. The state has allocated their remaining funds that weren't spent on other projects to our airport this fiscal year. What I handed out in, in the work session was different than what was in your packet. They have come up with all of their available funds, which is, totals $4.2 million, which increases the local match to a little over $1 million, which will be split between city and county 50/50. Again, this is if the city council approves that. You have to approve the amended amount to have the mayor and city clerk sign this. Again, this is going to assist us to finish these jobs that we've worked on for a number of years. Both Hans Lujan's and myself have worked with the state to try to continue our funding. The runway repaving job was something that's really need to be done to help our tenant, our primary tenant out there at Phoenix Air and other tenants that use that property. So, I recommend approval of this grant.
And you mentioned in the work session, I just want to make sure I've heard it correctly, that we're not going to be spending any more than what we have budgeted in our year-to-year fiscal budgets to, to handle this. We have X amount of dollars that are budgeted each year for the airport. This isn't going to exceed what the City of Cartersville's commitment to that is.
That, that is the goal. I am trying to make sure that we're spending what we have in this fiscal year budget, which is another item upcoming. And I've worked with the county to try to offset our costs. We're working through our budget year. They've agreed to do that. And as this, this project moves into our next fiscal year, to make sure that we do that and, and spend the Airport Authority money to try to compensate anything that's shortfall in our budget.
And I guess I missed, I should have asked it in the work session. You said this is an amended copy. When did they send this amended?
I received it at about 4:05 this afternoon.
Okay.
You need to approve the proposal as amended.
Prove as amended. That's what my notes were for. Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Dan?
I just would, just encourage us to really have a good, a well-balanced relationship with the county. If we can balance that out a little bit differently. But, I just, I, I, I'm a great proponent of the airport, and I just think that for us, it'd be great to maybe just have a good conversation about that. But, I appreciate that, what they're doing. But, I appreciate the airport. It's a great asset. But, I think that, that maybe a little bit, we could work a little bit on that.
Sure.
There's no other discussion. A motion is in order.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second. All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Porter, continue on.
Yes, sir. This is, Crowe Engineering Airport Services is kind of tied to the last one, and actually fiscal year expenditures, the eight invoices that were included in the packet total $219,907.65. This has kind of been our local 5% match. The Airport Authority's really been paying these invoices that we've had, other ones that come through. It's come to a point where I need to ask the city and county to make that balancing request for the Airport Authority. As I mentioned in the earlier item, basically, this will be coming from, this $219,907 will come out of city funds to help allocate our, through our budget this fiscal year. The county will pay their 50% match out of these items in next fiscal year, their calendar year, to kind of help us get through with that grant that was just awarded and accepted by the city council. So, I recommend approval of this $219,907.65 to Crowe Engineering.
Okay. Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last one for you, Mr. Porter.
Yes, sir. Matthews Garage Vehicle Repair. We had a vehicle accident, not our fault. Travelers, our insurance company has said the recommended repair cost is $6,318.82. Recommend approval invoice when it comes in from Matthews Garage. We are, actually, already received our, actually, $1,000 less than deductible, but we do, I do anticipate getting the full amount back once GEICO pays their share. We're subgrading the claim to the other party's insurance company, but I recommend approval of the Matthews Garage invoice, which should not exceed $6,0318.82.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Second.
All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Chief Klineger, you've got the next item, please, sir.
Sir, Mayor, Council. Police Department's requesting approval for the purchase of protective equipment for each member, each sworn officer in the Coastal Police Department to replace the existing gear we have that's approximately 40 years old. We sent out a request for bids to three different law enforcement supply companies, received bids all within about $1,000 of each, with the lowest bid being from a company Cormac for $32,832. We would recommend that we accept the lowest bid from Cormac, and we would ask that, ask for approval. But, part of this, part of the purchase was a budget item. Parts wasn't covered. We've decided to actually pay for the entire purchase with asset forfeiture funds if we get approval, and we would ask that we have your support and recommendation for this purchase.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Chief on this? Not a motions in order.
Make a motion to approve purchase.
Second. All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Good evening, everyone. The Water Department needs to buy 100 residential meters. These are our typical 3/4-inch meter that's probably in front of almost everybody's house. It's a sole-source provider. The meters are, are sold through a company called Delta Municipal, and they are the distributor for Neptune metering products in Georgia. The total cost for 100 units would be $6,200, and ask for your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
This is a question on the sole-source provider. Is that because we, this is the standard, this is-
That's correct.
-you're going across what we deal with.
That's right. We, we have, decades ago, we used to not have a standard meter, and what we found is that it greatly increased the amount of parts that we had to, to carry to service all the different brands, because they weren't standardized. And that was where that decision was made, to standardize on one meter. And that is why, so this, this particular brand of meter is sold by one company in the state of Georgia.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Chief Carter? Good evening to you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Feels a little bit awkward. I've not heard one dog bark or any birds chirping, but we're glad to be back.
Or Jase yelling at his son.
Well, just.
There, I've yelled a few times this meeting, but.
We respectfully request permission to do an emergency repair on our tower truck for the city. These repairs need to occur for our tower truck to be able to meet its annual certification compliance. And, the repairs have been fairly extensive that we're running into. We've got to replace all the slides on the ladder that is going up and down. Also, the radiator has to be repaired, coolant system, along with various other items. Repairs that we're asking for will be handled by 10-8, who is the Pierce distributor manufacturer for the state of Georgia. The repairs will be handled at their Cobb County manufacturing facility. The estimate that we have for this particular repair is $16,852.39. We're asking for an amount up to and not to exceed of $17,000, just in case a few other nuts and bolts may be involved when they get ready to complete the repair. This will come out of our apparatus maintenance funds.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Ryan Hart, you have got some big-ticket items for us this evening. Let's start with the budget ordinance for FY 2021.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and Council, this is the second reading of this ordinance. A few highlights before I ask for your, before I ask for your approval. The budget for fiscal year 2021 totals $157,035,000. That is a decrease from last year's budget of $8,252,150, or 4.9%, 4.99% decrease. Some of the highlights in the, in the proposed budget include continuation of the 10-year capital plan. There's no increase in any of the utility rates, electric, gas, water, and sewer. No, no, there is no increase in property tax. We have already decided that we will be using the rollback rate, hopefully. There is no, no salary increases. The old pension contribution increased from 24% to 28%. The increase to transfers in the general fund from the water, gas, electric, and fiber funds. Incorporated goals from revisiting session. And last of all, it continues funding of the major capital improvements in water and sewer funding. And with that, I recommend the approval of the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget this evening.
Questions for Tom on this item? Before I get a motion, I do want to thank you. Ms. Brock, do you have something to?
I do.
Go right ahead.
I just want to thank Tom and his staff, as well as department heads and their staff. I know this was a painful process. You all turned in budgets before a global pandemic hit, and so there were lots of revisions. So, thank you for your patience and your understanding as we kept coming back. And I appreciate your work and diligence on this very much.
Thank you. I'll echo that and include you in that, in your leadership and, and in steering the ship on getting that done. Ms. Brock, I appreciate the amount of time and care you've put into this. And, again, trying to budget 12 months out in a pandemic when we don't know what we're doing week to week is, let's just say, nobody's done that before. And I think everybody in this room handled that exceedingly well. And my only hope is that, at least from the preliminary numbers from last month, that, that it didn't get as bad as, at least to this point, as we thought it was going to get. And if we can eke through that, maybe we'll be doing some budget amendments as the year goes on to maybe bring back a little bit of this. But, we've started in the, I think, the fiscally prudent and responsible thing to do is starting and giving ourselves some deep cuts as everybody tries to get back on their feet. And, when things get better, hopefully, we'll be, we'll be a part of that as well. So, that being said, any other questions, comments, or discussion? And if there's none, a motions in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Tom.
Yes, sir. This next item includes the contract for performing services for those agencies that are included in the annual budget. The dollar amount recommended is the same as last year, with one note. We were, we are excluding the E.L. Williams, uh, uh, E.L. Wilkins from, from this list. Hopefully, he will be able to bring back his, his camp next, next summer. Your approval for these contracts is recommended.
Mr. Lovell, does that have to be approved as amended? Okay, thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve as amended.
Second. All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tom. Next item, please.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Council, this is the second reading for the employee benefits and holiday pay. The employee benefits ordinance encompasses, let me back up. This encompasses a goal set in the visiting last January. All other city employees receive holiday pay. This, this particular ordinance is introducing the, the holiday pay aspect for the police and fire. As I said, all other employees receive the holiday pay. We feel like it's prudent and fair for, for the police and fire to also receive the holiday pay. Again, this is the second reading. No changes have been made since the first reading, and I ask, I recommend this for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
I'd like to make a-
Motion to approve.
I'd like to make a comment.
Go right ahead.
All right. I know that, you know, we've been on council for 12 years now, or going on 13, I guess, and it has been something that's been brought up multiple times-
Time and time again, yes.
-by the fire and, and police chiefs. So, in these trying times, and all the changes we're trying to make, and as hard as this budget was, I want to commend you guys for getting that in there for these guys and supporting them. So, I think that's a, that's a great thing and great attribute for you guys.
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ren, your-
Motion to approve.
-motion is still stand? Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item, please, Tom.
Honorable Mayor and Council, this, again, is the second reading for this ordinance. This ordinance basically will, will delete the sick pay for fiscal year 2021. That pay usually occurs in December of each year, and it, it is currently included in the employee policy, section 16-30. This is due mainly to the COVID pandemic. It, we are asking for it to be, hopefully, just, just deleted from this current year fiscal, or the approved budget for 2021. Hopefully, we will have sufficient funds to be able to bring it back into future budgets.
I like the word suspended better than deleted. Does that more accurately capture what we're doing here?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Your approval is also recommended for this ordinance.
And also of note, as we suspend it, people that have accrued it and have it sitting there, it doesn't go away and vanish. It stays in place, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. Thought that was a softball.
I've got, I've got too much stuff going in my head.
Again, any more items tonight, I'm going to start calling you Bob Jones. But, that being said, any other questions or discussion?
Just a clarification. We're not doing away with the sick, the, the sick leave.
No, the, the sick-
This is the bonus if they don't-
Correct. Correct. Basically, the, the way this works is if, if folks have a accrued sick time or vacation time, I think it's sick time, isn't it?
Sick time.
Sick time. Over, over a certain dollar amount at the end of the fiscal year, or the end of the calendar year, not fiscal year, then they are awarded that, as, as you said, as a bonus.
But, I do want to make sure that you keep mine as suspended, and then we try to work it back in.
It is suspended until, hopefully, we can bring it back in 2020, 2022 budget, yes.
Thank you. All right. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
I have to apologize, because I didn't have, pass out my notes on the financial statement. So, if you give me just one second, I'll do that. Once again, I apologize for delaying. Honorable Mayor and Council, tonight we'll be looking at the financial report for April 2020 and comparing it to April 2019. In the general fund, the revenues increased over last April by $3.5 million. Expenses increased by $1.8 million. Couple of areas I look at in the revenue, revenue lines, local office and sales tax have a slight increase there of about $1,200. You'll note that that is down from prior months. Building permits and inspection fees have a decrease here of about $18,000. In the water and sewer fund, revenues increased over last April by $507,000. Expenses increased by $10.1 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expense, and increased capital expenses. In the gas fund, revenues decreased over last April by $2.7 million. Expenses decreased by nine point, eight, I'm sorry, $9.8 million, and this is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased cost of gas purchases, decreased debt service expenses, and decreased capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues decreased over last year by $2,000. Expenses decreased by $1.1 million. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase electricity, and decreased capital expenses. In the stormwater fund, revenues increased over last April by $101,000. Expenses decreased by $212,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, I'm sorry, increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. In the solid waste fund, revenues increased over last April by $492,000. Expenses increased by $128,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased over last April by $93,000. Expenses decreased by $215,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. Do I have any questions I can answer?
I don't, I don't have, anybody have any questions? Ms. Brock, do you have any comments?
I do. April, I know March was the, the middle of the month, month when we started with the stuff, the plant being closed. With April, having a chance to look at April, it was not as bad as we anticipated. I know our sales tech came back better than we anticipated for the month of April as well. So I think once we look at May, we'll have a better idea going forward what that looks like, but overall, April's numbers were good.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Tom? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Hardig, is there any other business that needs to come for council? And has anybody on that call asked to make comment on anything at this time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody here got anything to say? Very good. It's good to have everybody back in here, continuing to do the right things. And if there's no other business that needs to come for the city, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Stay gold.